Welcome to the afternoon session of the Landmarks Preservation Commission's Public Hearing and Public Meeting for November 18th, 2025. We're going to resume with a public hearing item number nine, and I'm going to turn it over to our Director of Preservation, Corey Harala.
Thank you. Public hearing item number nine is LPC 26-03398. This is an application for a binding report in the Borough of Manhattan, Block 1008, Lot 15, 131 West 55th Street, City Center 55th Street Theater, formerly Mecca Temple, individual landmark. This is a Moorish-style club building designed by H.P. Knowles and built in 1922 to '24, and the application is to install through-wall louvers.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Leanne Pollock, Preservation Staff. This application's for the installation of three through-wall louvers on the West 56th Street facade of the New York City Center Individual Landmark Building seen here. The purpose of the project is to replace existing mechanical equipment that serves various rehearsal spaces and which currently lack access to fresh air. The proposed upgrades are planned to bring equipment up to meet EPA and New York City Mechanical Code requirements. The City Center building goes through the block and actually has two street frontages. For reference, the main public entrance is on the West 55th Street facade, and the proposed work is on the West 56th Street facade. The louvers are proposed to go through three of these recessed blind openings that you see here in the 1940s tax photo, and it appears that they had always been infilled and that there weren't even windows there at the time of the tax photo. This picture shows the West 56th Street facade today with the blind window openings again in this bay right here. And here are the proposed louver locations at the fourth, fifth, and sixth floors. The floor plans show the placement and routing constraints for providing fresh air intake to these spaces. There's also a slightly shorter building seen here in gray to the east that makes the lot line unusable for fresh air louvers. The louvers are proposed in the three discrete locations identified here on the elevation, again at the fourth, the fifth, and the sixth floors. Each louver would be approximately 16 inches tall and placed at the top of the blind opening, which is recessed back from the main facade brick by about eight inches. The applicant team considered alternatives to the proposed louver location, such as locating it at the sill of the blind openings, but there are also limitations based on the existing interior conditions of the spaces that the louvers feed into. The louver would be a thin-line louver with narrow perimeter framing and would be finished to match the color of the brick at the facade. Thank you, and Jay Doherty from City Center would also like to say a few words.
Good afternoon, everyone. Just going to echo what she had said previously. This is basically providing fresh air intake for the air handler for our dance studios in four, five, and six, which currently do not have significant fresh air, outside air return to significantly turn over the air in the space as viewed by dancers or whoever's using the spaces.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Is there anybody in this room who would like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, I'm going to turn it over to Stephen Thompson.
Those joining via Zoom who wish to speak, please use the raise hand function. All right, just noting that we're, it was locked to external participants, and so it's just now been unlocked, and we'll let people log in momentarily. Those joining via Zoom who wish to offer testimony on 131 West 55th Street, please raise your hand. All right, seeing none, I'll note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Five recommends approval.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any final questions? Okay, if not, let's go ahead and close the hearing. Commissioner Jefferson, would you make a motion to close the hearing? Commissioner Goldblum, would you second that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed. Commissioner Chen, would you like to start this discussion?
This is a straightforward one, a logical, rational. I don't think there's any other place to put it, and I think I can find this appropriate.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum? Commissioner Jefferson? Commissioner Kimbe?
You'd as well.
Okay, and Commissioner Wilder?
Undebrogated.
Thank you. Commissioner Chen, would you mind reading the motion?
In a matter of LPC 26-03398, 131 West 58th Street, City Center 55th Street Theater, formerly Mecca Temple Individual Landmark, the application is to install through-wall louvers. Noting the primary public entrances and this design facade are located at the West 55th Street south facade of the through-block building. Further noting that the proposed HVAC upgrade is driven by requirements of the Environmental Protection Agency and the New York City Mechanical Code, I recommend approval finding that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the presence of partial-height louvers as select blind windows will not diminish the cohesive design of the symmetry of this large-scale facade, that the high location and deep recess of the proposed louvers will reduce the visual impact of the installations, of the installation, that the proposed louvers will feature narrow perimeter framing and blades and a tan finish to match the finish of the surrounding brickwork, thereby helping them to recede from view, and that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural or historic character of the individual landmark.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum, would you second that motion?
Second.
Thank you. And Mark, will you call the vote?
I'm Chair Master.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Goldblum?
Mr. Sunday?
Aye.
Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilder?
Aye.
Six in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
Okay, great, that's been approved. Let's move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number 10. LPC 26-02451, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, Block 820, Lot 7505, 616 Avenue of the Americas in the Ladies Mile Historic District. This is a Bozart-style department store building designed by DeLimos and Cordes and
All right, what I think we're going to do is we're going to listen to the presentation now and take testimony, and maybe we'll take the vote later as Commissioner Goldblum is recused from this item. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Julie Rosen from Higgins Quaysbarth and Partners. I'm joined today by a client team from Burlington, as well as their sign programs, a signage designer, and FBLM, the project architect. 620 Avenue of the Americas, a Bozart-style department building, excuse me, department store building constructed in 1895. It's located in the Ladies Mile Historic District. As you can see on the map, it right is located on Sixth Avenue between 18th and 19th Streets on the east side of the avenue. The building extends almost past the block on 19th Street with 450 feet of frontage on 19th Street. At the time of its construction, the building was actually the largest department store building built in New York, so quite a large building. The lower floors of the building currently house multiple retailers, and there is a range of existing interior and exterior signage on the building. Burlington will be opening a new store location in the large north corner space, which you can see here. This space has notably been vacant for many years after the prior retailer Bed Bath &amp; Beyond. Burlington is leasing a significant amount of storefrontage in both the cellar and the first-floor levels. And as you may know, Burlington currently has a store a few blocks north on Sixth Avenue, where they've been for over 30 years. The company is committed to maintaining their presence in the neighborhood in this new store location, which is a relocation of their existing location up the street. This new location is incredibly important for the company. So the signage proposal before you today has been designed with visibility and brand identification in mind, particularly on this very busy thoroughfare of Sixth Avenue. The majority of the proposed signage is located within the interior of the store. We're only proposing one exterior sign location to be located at a shared entrance. And that shared entrance is located here, within the arch portal on Sixth Avenue. You can see this in the ground floor plan right. So through these doors, this is a shared entrance to all of the retail spaces in the building. There's no actual dedicated entrance to Burlington directly from the street, so all of the access will be from this center. Any other doors that you see in the plan, and you'll see in later photos, that lead to Burlington's space are simply for forward fire directly, and they are not here. There is, at this entrance, existing non-illuminated dimensional tenant signage located past the sign band, and our proposal is simply to install new matching non-illuminated signage for Burlington at this bay. I just also want to point out the large scale of the doors and the storefront infill, particularly in comparison to that pedestrian. So when the prior tenant Bed Bath &amp; Beyond was in the space, they had a significant amount of signage and interior partitions installed, both within windows and on awnings, and their signage really limited visibility into the interior of the store. Upper-floor tenants also have large signage, much of it was previously approved by LPC, and so our proposal really aims to open up this corner again, which had really been blocked off for many, many years, and create a much more visible condition, which it has not been in a long time. So as I mentioned, the north storefront has been vacant since Bed Bath &amp; Beyond went bankrupt several years ago. This commission also, over the last several years, approved a storefront master plan for the building that was approved in 2019 for storefront infill only. The landlord has since integrated some of the scope that was approved as part of that storefront master plan, including new egress store locations along the perimeter of the building. There is no signage master plan for the building, so what we are proposing today for Burlington is to have a proposal for this tenant. This is a huge building, as you can see, with extremely large storefronts. The corner retail space has very large display windows and transoms that begin on Sixth Avenue and then continue along 19th Street. As I mentioned, this building was historically a department store, and Sixth Avenue is an extremely busy shopping thoroughfare. You can see from these photos, there was a lot of pedestrian activity at street level, and when the building was completed, there was also an elevator that ran along Sixth Avenue. Goods were historically displayed in the show windows, sometimes in very large detailed displays, like you can see in some of these photographs. And signage was also intended to reach not only pedestrian street level, but those on the elevators as well. And so the two folders we have on the left side of the sheet actually show 620 Avenue of Americas, our storefront location in particular, and you can see that these types of installations were historically at the building as well as in other locations within the historically used district. I do also just want to point out that historically, the transom conditions at the building were solid, so the current here transom building is not. The scope of Burlington, excuse me, the scope of work for Burlington very much fits into this storefront context of signage and the displayed footage. So turning to our proposed scope of work, we can see our area of work highlighted in relation to the overall context of the building and the overall scale of the building. The Burlington is leasing the north corner retail space, including all of these bays on Sixth Avenue, and then all of these bays on Main Street, as well as a significant amount of interior square footage. So here we have our signage proposal, and I'm going to walk you through each type of signage individually to make sure that is clear. We have the Avenue of the Americas or the Sixth Avenue elevation on top, and then the 19th Street elevation below. So all of the signage types we're proposing are called out with scope notes. Any of the other signage that you see here is existing signage for other retailers, which we are not touching. So the majority of our proposed signage is interior signage. The concept is to use technology to showcase Burlington's products while still maintaining transparency into the store, which is extremely important for the company. Having illuminated signage particularly at the corner is also very important for brand identification and wayfinding, particularly if there is no direct door entrance. So to take you through the proposal, the one exterior sign that we are proposing is this single sign on Sixth Avenue. This is a non-illuminated dimensional sign installed at the transom, which will match the existing signage that is there for the other tenants. On Sixth Avenue, we are proposing signage at both the storefront windows as well as at the trap. So at the storefront windows, we are proposing two light boxes and then one LED screen at the corner. And up at the transom level, we are proposing the installation of two internally illuminated signs set back and installed on an existing open socket. At 19th Street, some of the scope is similar, so at the display windows, we're proposing one LED screen at the corner, one light box, one bay in, and then we're proposing five non-illuminated fabric signage panels within additional bays on 19th. At the transom level, we are again proposing one internally illuminated sign set on that setback soffit, and those soffits are painted red. And then at these additional four bays, we are proposing the installation of red window film to be installed on the inside face of the glazing. A soffit wall cannot be constructed there, but the intent is to continue the red aesthetic along that elevation. All of the signers that we're proposing will step back significantly in some of the glazing. This is going to allow for visual access to be maintained into the store interior, and again, to maintain that overall transparency of the store. Just to note some dimensions, the top of the display window, so up to the transom bar level here, this is about 15 feet off the sidewalk, and then the entire height of the storefront bays is 25 feet. These are extremely large storefronts. The scale of the installations is well proportioned to the scale of the storefronts, and the sizes of the light boxes, the LED screens, and the non-illuminated signage panels have all been designed to be generally in compliance with the staff rule and the dimension of founders that goes a lot for. Before we move into some of the technical details, I also wanted to note that the proposal you're seeing today does include a significant scope reduction that the team made in response to the community board. So our original proposal included five additional light boxes on 19th Street. We removed six of those light boxes due to concerns over illumination and replaced those with the fabric sign channel. We have black-and-white elevations showing with scopes that we just went through. And then I did want to note, we're proposing one additional non-illuminated signage panel all the way at the back of the storefront on 19th Street. Behind this window, there is an enclosure for an egress there, so there isn't visibility into the storefront there anyway, so it's a location for signage, and we're just going to make sure of it. We have an overall plan of the ground floor, so again, Burlington is taking over a very large lease area. All of their signage is really located here at this corner of Sixth Avenue and Fifth Street. And then we have an enlarged view here showing the different types of signs, and they're all color-coded, and I can go through these for you as well. So this is showing everything that you just saw in elevation. The two LED screens are called out in the dark purple, and then the light boxes are shown in blue. So we're proposing three light boxes, two on Sixth Avenue, one on 19th Street, and then two LED screens, one at each corner bay, Sixth Avenue, 19th Street. All of the other signage at the display windows is non-illuminated. We have an overlay here showing the transom level as well. So the orange is showing you the internally illuminated signage that's installed on those setback soffits. Again, those are open, they're floating soffits. And then the red indicates the new window film, which will be installed on the interior face of the store. We have some details here as well. I think most helpful is the section detail, hoping through the storefronts, it does show those considerable setbacks of the soffit signage and the LED screen at Bed Bath. Well, and I'm happy to come back to the sheet if anyone has questions. I also wanted to quickly discuss the difference between the light boxes and the LED screens. So on the left here, we have an image of the light box. This is constructed of an illuminated box, and it has fabric stretched over it. And it's the fabric that actually has the graphic on it, and then the light. The light boxes will only show static imagery. And then we have the LED screen on the right. The LED screen is a high-quality digital display, and these screens will show static or moving. And we're only locating the LED screens off of the two, three light boxes. The project team has confirmed that both of these sign types will have sensors embedded in them, which will allow them to automatically dim at nightfall, so that's going to help reduce the impact of illumination. It's will ensure that the signs aren't too bright. The signs will not put off any more foot handles than the ambient light that's already going to be produced by the interior lights of the store. And we do have the Burlington team here who can answer any more technical questions that you all may have after the presentation. We also noted that the commission has approved similar types of interior illuminated signage, including very large LED screens and light boxes, both in the Ladies Mile Historic District as well as in other retail-heavy historic districts such as this. Finally, just to come back to our proposal, again, we have the two primary elevations, Sixth Avenue on the top and 19th Street below. Again, almost all of our signage is located at the inside of the store, setback from the glazing, with a single exterior non-illuminated sign.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Is there anybody in this room that would like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, let me turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote testimony.
Those joining via Zoom who wish to speak, please use the raise hand function, after which you'll be promoted to panelists. We ask you to unmute yourselves, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. The first speaker will be Kaylee Johnson.
My name is Kaylee Johnson, speaking on behalf of the Historic District's Council. HGC is not opposed to most reversible signage. However, we could not tell what was proposed versus existing in this presentation, and therefore could not come to a conclusion on its appropriateness. Thank you.
The next speaker will be Christina Conroy.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. Now, the Victorian Society recommends denial of this proposal to add signage to 616 for several reasons. The applicant has provided some excellent historic photographs of this building and the adjacent streets on Boards Five and Six. Now, looking at these, we were struck by the fact that very little signage is visible in these pictures. This allowed the fine proportions and detailing of the structure to be seen much more clearly. As the building already has much more signage in place than was there in the 19th century, we believe it would detract from the building to add more. Modern technology also allows for signage to get brighter and more colorful than ever. This also detracts from the historic structure. Adding the proposed signage to the existing riot of color and fonts will just exacerbate the effect. Finally, the rules for the overall amount of signage to be considered, oh, finally, sorry, the rules call for the overall amount of signage to be considered when more is proposed. Please look at the photos of the existing conditions. What is there is almost the definition of excessive signage, which draws undue attention to itself. This proposal should be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else joining via Zoom who wishes to speak, please use the raise hand function. All right, seeing none, I'll note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Five recommends denial, a contingent on the illuminated light box signage and LED screens, and LPC received written testimony from two individuals recommending denial.
Okay, thank you. Would you like, oh, would you like to address the comments?
Yeah, so just to respond first to HGC's testimony, I hope that my explanation of existing signage versus our proposed is now clear, but I'm absolutely happy to go back and clarify for the Commissioners if there are any questions there. The Victorian Society feedback, I think perhaps relates a bit to the community board response as well. Most of our signage is proposed for the interior of the storefront, so we're not impacting any of the historic fabric. Will be set back significantly in an effort to really allow for continued visibility through the storefront, in certain areas of scale of the storefronts, such that the visibility can handle this level and scale of signage. We did reduce the amount of illuminated signage in response to community board feedback and in response to some neighborhood concerns. That was reflected in the proposal presented today. We did follow up with the community board. They noted that they appreciated the follow-up and the response, but we did not change the rules. So other than that, happy to answer.
Oh, if you can just state your name, thank you.
All right, Timothy Swernick, manager of graphic planning at Burlington, and thank you very much for hearing our proposal today, and we are honored to be stewards of this beautiful historic building. And in that very statement, back to what the Milliken Brothers catalog did in 1905, we are trying to keep the open visibility from the street into the store. The previous tenants filming over the entirety of the building, I would agree, that is excessive. What we're trying to do here is we've reduced the graphic scope of the previous tenants significantly, and in regards to the amount of like visual noise and visual clutter that we will be adding to the street, we're taking a lot of measures to make sure that these will not be oppressive to the street, that they will be dimmed to match the ambient lighting that is already there. And what we're using these for is to show the product that we offer and have it in a way that is easy to swap out the product and the graphics depending on the season, as opposed to something like window film. But we also don't want to window film off the entire space. It looks closed. We want to show life in this beautiful space that we are taking over, and it is a very big, high-profile location for us. So we do need to put our best foot forward when it comes to branding and marketing. Very respectfully and appropriately, we have taken the brightness into consideration and will continue to do that throughout the life of their time.
Great, thank you. I think we have a question. Commissioner Wilder?
I think this might be for Corey. How do we look at percentage of signage when it's set back, or is there a difference between it being applied to the facade or setback?
It's a good question. The rules do address both types of signage. More recently, started to think about the implications of LED signage, but for that matter, anything on the interior. Generally speaking, when interior signs are set back 18 inches or more, if they were just, say, suspended from the ceiling and were just the lettering, that might very well be eligible for a staff permit. In this case, some of the upper-level signage has with it backer panels that sort of fill up large expanses of the transom portions of those windows, not concealing dropped ceilings all the way, things like that, that sort of take it out of staff-level review. But nonetheless, these are setback deeper than what staff rules may permit for some of these different signage types. When it comes to the, sort of, the signs that are more at ground level, that you'd walk by and see whether they're LED, a light box, or just a poster with no illumination, again, there are percentages that the staff rules require. You can't block more than 50% overall, 75% of the width, and I think there's been some reductions made here. Some of these are actually quite close to those figures, and again, they are setback. So it's a little hard to keep up with some of the last-minute changes, but nonetheless, I think there are also more than three different sign types, and so that's the other limiting factor for staff-level rules. Once it goes beyond that, it doesn't mean you all might not find it appropriate, it just means the staff can no longer do that. So those are the different sort of backgrounds on the rules for these types of signage. The last piece is they're also applying, proposing to apply red film to some of the upper transom windows. And again, staff-level rules, you could do a grayscale film if you were blocking dropped ceiling or mechanical equipment. or mechanical equipment, but here, I'm not sure what the case, but it seems to be part of the signage package. So it is to, that would be above the light line. And we're actually looking at doing a red perforated film for that area. So it is to block all of the open deck ceiling that's above the light line that you'd be seeing. Okay, so it might be that film could be reviewed at staff level, but in this case, because it's red, it doesn't meet that aspect of the rule. And I do have the film and I have a lightbox and I have a banner if you would like to see it.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any other questions? Okay. So I think what we're going to do is we're going to table this and vote on this later. Oh, okay, we can close the hearing. Commissioner Jefferson, would you make a motion to close the hearing? And then Commissioner Ikumbe, would you second that?
Second.
Okay. And, okay, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed. So we're going to have our discussion now and then we're going to have our vote later. Our potential vote. Well, we'll have the, yeah. Okay, so Commissioner Wilder, would you like to start this discussion?
Sure. I think I think the, the color of the signage could possibly be misleading in terms of its dominance of the facade, of the amount of space it's taking up, which the numbers would say that the amount of signage is appropriate. However, looking at it, it becomes, I guess, distracting from the rest of the facade. So I'm kind of, I'm kind of on the fence and I think I I think I'd like to hear more from the rest of the Commissioners.
So let me ask you a question. Are you saying that it's the red film on the transom that's bothering you? Is that?
Well, if, I think if, even if you're across the street from the building and the red sign is setback, how is it going to read, right? I think it still would read as if it's very close and it feels like signage that is applied. It's very difficult to tell from these elevations. And I think that's the confusing part because, I mean, I have to kind of go back and forth to the diagram to see what's setback and what's actually applied to the surface. And if, like I said, I think if I'm just looking at the diagram and the numbers, then yes, it makes sense that it's appropriate. But looking at it, it just feels, it feels like it's overt. Like it's just dominating the facade negatively.
And let me just clarify for you. So on the bottom image here, the four bays to the left side are all the red film only kind of right on the glass. It's the corner bay, it's the one on the far right, and then the two around the corner on the top elevation that are setback several feet from the storefronts with signs applied to them. So you may be comfortable with some of that, none of it, but there are the two different types and that's the division line is really that. Just the far-right bay on the bottom image is the setback sign. Everything after that is the film on the window glass.
Okay. Commissioner Ikumbe?
Okay. If the graphics that are in the lightboxes and the LED signs are proportionally correct in what we allow, I'm okay with that. I think it's at the transom. Because normally stating when things are at, I guess, at this level, it's normally done in a gray tone. I'm believing.
That is what the staff-level rules allow. You all are considering other things.
I think it's actually because of the color itself. Red is very dominant and it will read as a band going around the building. And I'm not sure that's what we really want to, want to emphasize. I understand it's part of the brand, but we're also trying to preserve the character of the building as well. So I don't know if there's a place where maybe only part of it can remain in the red while others become a more subdued color or so.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Jefferson?
If, I agree with, I agree that the, if you look at page four, the solution is much more, less dynamic than it's required than this solution, existing solution. But if you go to page 16, page seven and page seven, you see that the design is really very Swiss model, very elegant, very simple, but yet dynamic. Go to page 16. You see how dynamic it is in relationship to the architecture, the different spaces in between things. It's composed but dynamic. They could, they could have if they wanted to put the images in the center of each pattern. And it would be very simple, elegant thing, but they wanted to have some dynamic, which I can accept. And I think they did a good job on this. I think it's really much quieter than what was there before. And it has some dynamicism, which, and yet has a certain elegance to it.
Great, thank you. So you find it appropriate as presented? You're fine with it as presented? Okay, thank you. Okay. Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I can see that they bring the necessity for the corner, obviously, for a new store, for a new brand, a new tenant. As to the prior Commissioners' comments about this color red as a branding, I think there are a couple of possible options and I'd love to see how that would be commissioned. One is obviously has been suggested before about grayscale, which was bad. Yeah, or this area is part of that historic past that had used awning people. And so definitely, so I don't have a preference one way or the other, but I thought it would be interesting to do.
Okay, I'll jump in too. So I find that the signage in general is appropriate. I think that this building has had a lot of signage in the past. And I think this brings a little bit more order to it and I like the thought process. I think it's the corners that have a more dynamic and stronger presence, which makes sense. There's very minimal exterior signage just at the entrance. I think that what a lot of the Commissioners are thinking about is the red, you know, the spans of red on the transom. That is, I guess, somewhat unusual. I understand that that's really what you're using to indicate that it's Burlington and that you're using it in replace of other signage to show that it's really the presence, the strong presence of Burlington and how much space that they're taking. So I am more supportive because I understand the concept of what you're trying to do and I think it reduces other signage that you would otherwise put on the transom indicating that this is Burlington. It sounds like some of the Commissioners are less supportive. So, you know, we could look at maybe replacing it with, you know, an awning or something if you wanted to retain that color. But I understand what you're trying to do and I support the application as presented. So I think what we're going to do is we're going to hold off until later for a vote.
And if the applicant team, key members at least, wants to stay for later in the afternoon, we hope to have enough Commissioners to take a vote. I think the staff can also talk to you about some of the discussion that we've had here in case you want to make any adjustments. All right? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll move to the next item.
Okay. Next item is public hearing, item number 11, LPC 26-03160. This is an application, oops, hold on just a second. Yes, an application for an amendment in the Borough of Manhattan, Block 1491, Lot 4, 985 Fifth Avenue in the Metropolitan Museum Historic District. This is an apartment building designed by Westler and Schementi and built in 1969 to 70. The application is to amend certificate of appropriateness 24-05651 for demolishing the existing building and constructing a new building. In this, in this case, to include enlarging and redesigning certain aspects of the new building.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't hear it open.
Aye.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Ward Dennis with Higgins Quaid Barth. I'm joined by Bill Sofield, the architect for the project, and Elliot Spitzer, the owner of the property. This is 985 Fifth Avenue, located on the east side of Fifth Avenue, just south of the Metropolitan Museum. We were here about two years ago for a public hearing, at which time you approved the demolition of the existing building, which was constructed in 1970 by Westler and Schementi, and approved the construction of a new apartment building on the site. Since then, City of Yes provisions have given us additional floor area, additional height, and that has allowed us to make what we think are some very nice changes to the building. This is the new proposal for the building. In many ways, very similar to what you reviewed and approved in the past and I think what you found appropriate in the past. It's a limestone apartment building, really drawing inspiration from classic Fifth Avenue apartment buildings up and down the avenue. The changes that we are proposing here really happen at the top of the building. We are adding one story at the top of the building. We are also adjusting the street wall height of the building, which you can see here in the center, so that it now aligns very evenly with 988 Fifth Avenue immediately to our north. And then at the top of the building, we had really struggled in the first iteration to get all of the mechanical equipment into the top of the building. And the result of that was the sort of off-center asymmetrical crown to the building that you see in the center. The additional height under City of Yes really allowed us to make the crown of the building more symmetrical, very symmetrical, and introduce more setbacks up and down the, up and down the crown and particularly at the rear of the building, which you will see in a moment. So those are really the summary of the changes. Looking at the, the technical aspect of the zoning, we're going from 19 to 20 stories. The street wall height at the base of the building allows us to go up to 155 feet. Our neighbor to the north is at 154, so that's our street wall height. As you can see, again, we're now aligning that building within a intermediate cornice below to align to their intermediate cornice. We are adding the one story, sort of comes in up at the crown of the building. We are also, the overall height of the building goes up by about 14 feet. That's what allows us to reconfigure the top and make everything more symmetrical. We are adding about one and a half of the two FAR that is allowed. That's what we can fit within the height limits on this building. Most of that additional floor area comes from enlarging the floor plates of the previous floors to the rear. About half of that FAR comes from that one additional floor at one of the setback levels. So it's not a full, it's not a full FAR. Also, as part of this project, because it is utilizing the City of Yes provisions, the owner has purchased affordable housing certificates that will be used, about $7 million worth of affordable housing certificates that will be used within Community Board Eight. This is a ground floor plan showing the enlargement at the lower levels. Below the seventh floor, we are going back an additional 15 feet, leaving a 20-foot rear yard, which is what is allowed under the new City of Yes. And then in this section, you can see again that additional 15 feet at the lower level. And then we pick up an additional three feet off the back of all these intermediate floors. And then City of Yes actually allows us to start setting back off the rear of the building up here, which is, as you'll see when we get to the renderings, creates for a much nicer and I think much more appropriate massing of the building at the top. So again, most of the additional floor area is coming within the height of what was previously approved with that one additional story. Looking at Fifth Avenue, there are many historic buildings, the sort of classical era of Fifth Avenue apartment buildings between World War I and World War II. There are many buildings that have these crowns that project up above the overall mass of the building that include both penthouses and mechanical equipment. Mechanical equipment back then was primarily water towers, domestic water. Now we have a lot more mechanical stuff, building systems to fit within the tops of the buildings. But these kinds of crowns, particularly symmetrically arranged, are very much a feature along Fifth Avenue and even something that Philip Johnson in 1001 Fifth Avenue riffed off of to some extent. Looking further south, this is now outside the Metropolitan Museum Historic District, but in the Upper East Side Historic District on Fifth Avenue. Again, we see more of these buildings with prominent crowns that become part of really the cityscape along Fifth Avenue. We see that particularly when we're looking from within Central Park. There is often a, you know, unlike Park Avenue, there's not this strict cornice datum on Fifth Avenue, but there is a sort of general height above which you then start to see the crowns of the building projecting. So this is an overall streetscape elevation just within the Historic District. The existing 985 Fifth Avenue building is here, slightly lower than the building immediately to our south. The previous proposal, we can see here, it actually, the previous proposal was shorter than the existing building. And then the proposed building is now taller than the existing, but still shorter than our building to the south. And I think very much an appropriate and really much nicer feature within the skyline of Fifth Avenue. So I will turn it over here to Bill Sofield to talk through some of the design details on these changes. Bill?
Thank you, Ward. Hi, Bill Sofield of Studio Sofield. I could not be more excited and honored to be part of this project. I'm kind of thrice blessed. The first time was when Mr. Spitzer called to say he was considering taking down the brown brick, brown brick building and doing something more appropriate for the neighborhood. I think I was chosen for my record on the other buildings I've worked on, on the Upper East Side. The second time was when the building was so enthusiastically by both the Community Board and this very commission received. And third, even better, is the change in zoning that really enables us to give an appropriate crown to the building. So as previously approved and the current proposal. Oops, I'm going the wrong way. There we go, the current proposal, which is still substantially below the neighboring building. The top is about 25 feet below and the roof is about 21 feet below the building to the south. I think it's most evident in this axonometric where the neighbors I think it's most evident in this axonometric, where the neighbors are really going to perceive it from the north and from the east, and in a much more favorable way. We've now got the ability of stepping the crown to create the symmetry, and thank you for Seth, all of your great input about how to best handle it, able to pull back the elevator shaft by about three feet, which enables this to, to become a little bit more, it recedes a bit more. Okay. The materials are much the same as they were before. The only difference is an accent limestone, which is the same limestone with, but it's slightly more textured finish, and you'll see why we did that a bit later. And it's the, recall the brown, the intermediate brick color, which attempts to span the, the building to the south and our building, as approved. And the, the new nothing, which, you know, although it is as of right, I think it was really so special that we were able to use this zoning to create something a little bit more appropriate to the neighborhood. I think the, the, in reviewing the video from, from the previous, the two, I think the two comments were that the, that it felt a little stumpy in the middle, which of course was driven by zoning, and that perhaps we'd bring back the ghosted image on the, on the south side that was originally part of it. So there you see it, but, but I think it's a much more successful top, and by, quite a bit lower than our neighboring building. You didn't see, but yeah, my reference to the Emily Roth building, just to the north. From Central Park, having the elevator receive, you know, I'm trying to be very self-critical. You know, I grew up in a family where if you got an A, you were asked why there were, were they not handing out A pluses? So it's always good to be not too self-satisfied, and this was an opportunity to really see what, what could be improved on the project. And I think the, yeah, I, yeah, I was getting very much Notre Dame here with, you know, we were trying to pack it up against this building to become less noticeable, but I think this is much more successful with the symmetry now. From the south, this was also an opportunity to accentuate the coining, and where we had primary limestone on the left, you can see that I used the limestone made judiciously and the brick to make this. We want to, I'm a contextualist and can't ignore the building to the south. It's a reality, it's probably never going to go anywhere, and so we really wanted to be a good neighbor and to make that, that intersection. And then, here it is from the north. You can see, the goal was to block as much of that water tower and mechanical space as possible to the building of the south. And I think by starting to step the building back here, keeping the, the inset fairly low, for the, and then really stepping this, having windows to the north and creating a crown. So here you see the biggest impact, which I'm so excited for. Yeah, I know it's a secondary facade, but just because developers cheaped out in nineteen twenty and put a, put bad brick on the back, I think it's so important at this height that, you know, the Carlisle, the Roth building, ten forty, all have beautiful crowns. And what you see on the left is the existing, second was what was approved, and now I think something that really does add, you can see it, it, I think it starts to begin to mitigate the rather unfortunate back of this building, which is just massive brown brick. Can see a little bit more closely. I am a historicist, so I couldn't help but, you know, the air conditioning, you know, vents are a reality. I can show you more literally, you know, where I took this detailing from, which is very much the Brokman mansion, as well as this corner here. So the east view directly on, eliminating the big windows to the left that, that roll up the center, and creating a more flat facade with balconies occasionally, and a more irregular top, which is quite characteristic in terms of window placing, and then the, the crown with the much nicer mechanical. And here you see that the brown brick really diminishes the presence of the elevator shaft. Now, my favorite parts, I still get to be the sculptor, I still get to go to Indiana, I still get to do the things that I did at one thirty-five E seventy-nine street. And the carving isn't as difficult if you do it in the quarry when it's still wet. So I'm looking forward to that, the dog bar with the pigeon and the squirrel. And probably the most important to me is on the service doors, paying, paying homage to the buildings that had gone before it. It is such a significant building because its demolition did trigger, actually was directly responsible for the, you know, for the birth of the Landmarks Preservation Commission. So to show the existing building on the left and a bit of its history, it was very much of its time, and the Brokman mansions that, that were, were torn down, and the history of the Brokman mansions. It, it happens in what I call the old Crest Department Store, which I always love, which is, I guess, on, what, Forty, Forty-eighth Street, Forty-first, where there's the bronze doors showing the plans of the, of the old brick houses. The only regret is there isn't room for the wooden houses that were on the, on the site too, but, and then Paul Goldberg had written a wonderful essay about the building, very positively, and he said, perhaps in the most witty gesture of all, is the silhouette of the old Brokman mansions on the south, and he was sorry that it, it had been taken away, and also in the, in the commission's last comments were, perhaps they could be brought back, which we did, and that's the, the other finish to the same limestone, which is slightly darker. And directly, you know, got the, you know, the inspiration for the grills from the, from the, 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 here, and the detailing on the HVAC tower is this old detail from the Brokman mansion. I don't think anybody will, will make a direct connection, but I think subliminally perhaps, and it is a much more beautiful thing to look at from the future. So that, that is, that is our presentation, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Commissioner Walder?
Yeah, quick question. I just wanted to know what, what went into the decision-making process of the change from your setbacks? Your, your original one, I guess the setback was a floor lower, the first setback was, and then the second one, you kind of kept it the same, but you have less floors within it.
So I, I can start that, and then, and Bill may want to add, but the original, the, the first setback here that you're referring to here was defined by the zoning. So the City of Yes zoning allows us to go about another ten feet up, and that allowed us to then align that setback with the building to the north more directly. So really, we just, we stretched those lower floors by a few inches at each floor to pick up that, to pick up that ten feet, or actually, I think really nine feet, because we're at one fifty-four, and make that alignment. And then, a lot of the other setbacks at the crown of the building were also defined by the prior zoning. City of Yes gave us more flexibility there, so we were able to model the top of the building, I think really more freely. And Bill, do you want to add anything to that?
Okay, so the cynical, if you were a developer, one might want to squish it with the new zoning, another floor in here, which could be possible if we lowered the ceilings. And Mr. Spitzer, very responsibly, and I was able to convince him to actually make these alignments better, which is astonishing that, that we were able to do that. Oh, I forgot to, forgot to say that. But, you know, the alignments now are, are really exceptional. And you can see that this setback is, is within a few inches the same as this, but this corner cut here is actually a floor below. You can see here, here, floor below this, so that's what allows us to make that sculptural pattern.
Any other questions? Okay. Commissioner Jefferson?
Just a architectural question. You have two different types of limestone. You have a rough limestone and a smooth limestone. The, the smooth limestone, is that on the front facade, and the rough limestone in the back, or how do you, the, the two textures, where do you put them?
It, it is. The, the front limestone, which we're calling the primary limestone, is, matches pretty much exactly the adjacent buildings, which is a finished limestone. It's what you find on the, on the Metropolitan Museum of Art. As we get into a secondary limestone, we're keeping the same limestone, but changing the texture, and there are two different texture changes on, on the building, which that way there's a uniformity, and then the brick, there, you know, trying to feather those, those two together.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, let's turn to testimony. We actually have somebody signed up to testify. We have Zainab Turan from the Friends of the Upper East Side.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair, Master, and Commissioners. My name is Zainab Turan, and I'm speaking on behalf of Friends of the Upper East Side. Friends cannot support this application, and we are compelled to state as to, clearly as to why. City of Yes, as we and many preservation organizations warn, would incentivize luxury development at the expense of existing relatively affordable housing. It also undercuts open space protections that safeguard light and air at street level, protections that are essential in dense neighborhoods like the Upper East Side. This proposal is the embodiment of those fears becoming reality. We object to the proposed rear yard extension, which would further diminish the already limited open space in the interior courtyard. We also object to the enlargement of the Fifth Avenue footprint, previously approved by the commission in twenty twenty-three. In addition, we are deeply concerned by the proposed elimination of the privately owned public space, POPS, on Fifth Avenue, a plaza and arcade whose creation earned the developer a floor area bonus in nineteen sixty-nine. The removal of the castle, Priscilla Kopple's structure, steel sculpture, represents yet another unacceptable loss. Why should the City of Yes permit a developer to disregard long-established principles and regulations by constructing a taller and bulkier building while simultaneously removing the very public amenity that justified additional height and bulk? For decades, this public space has been an integral part of the Fifth Avenue streetscape and the character of the neighborhood, a welcoming place on the east side of the avenue. Its removal would be a significant and unnecessary loss to the community. As stated in our twenty twenty-three testimony, we also questioned environmental prudence, prudence of demolishing a nineteen sixty-nine building rather than retrofitting it. The structure may not be considered architecturally significant, but it is an authentic expression of its time. In the midst of a climate crisis and a projected two-point-six degree Celsius temperature increase, such wanton demolition with its substantial emissions, extensive construction debris, and waste of embodied carbon is indefensible when re-cladding or retrofitting is a viable alternative. We also lament the reduction in housing that this new luxury project represents. A twenty-four-story building with forty-six rental units, including at least six rent-stabilized apartments, whose leases ended in twenty twenty-two and three, is slated to be replaced by just twenty-six luxury units and no affordable housing on site, and we're very pleased to hear that, the contribution towards affordable housing, and would like to follow up, follow up about it, the details. Finally, the nineteen sixty-five demolition of the Brokman mansions at nine eighty-four and eighty-five Fifth Avenue was painful, yet defining moment in preservation history that led to the passage of the New York City's landmark laws. Friends believes that preservation is not about token gestures, just as silhouettes on-site facades or symbolic relief on service doors, which are meant to memorialize what has already been-
I'm so sorry, we surpassed three minutes.
Just one more sentence and I'll be done. Preservation means fighting for the buildings while they still stand. For all these reasons, we strongly urge the commission to deny this application, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in this room that would like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, I'm going to turn it over to Stephen Thompson for remote testimony.
Those joining via Zoom who wish to speak, please use the raise hand function. The first speaker will be Kaylee Johnson.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Kaylee Johnson, speaking on behalf of the Historic District's Council. HGC finds this proposal to be inappropriate. We share and support the concerns of Friends of the Upper East Side regarding the enlargement of the Fifth Avenue footprint and the removal of the castle, Priscilla Kopple's still sculpture. HGC is also deeply concerned about the loss of privately owned public space, which was created in nineteen sixty-nine to allow the developer to build a larger building. This proposal seeks to construct a taller and bulkier building and eliminate a large part of this cherished public space. We find this unacceptable and unnecessary. Thank you.
Anyone else joining via Zoom who wishes to speak, please use the raise hand function. All right, seeing on all note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Eight recommends approval.
Okay, thank you. Would you like to respond to any of the comments?
Yeah, sure. Actually, go back to, you know, a lot of what Friends brought up, the commission, I think, has already decided that the demolition of the nineteen seventy building, nineteen sixty-seven building, sorry, is, is appropriate. And part of that discussion did center around the way that this building sat on Fifth Avenue. It is, the existing building is set back from the avenue. There is a driveway in the front, and part of that, I guess, is a publicly owned private space, but that was how that building was developed. The proposed building is fully as of right. City of Yes really is not creating this, this change. This, the, the new building was approved, and the demolition of the existing building was approved well before City of Yes was approved, enacted this year. So I, so I, I'm not really sure how else to respond, other than to say that this is, you know, the commission has already approved much of it. I would also point out that in nineteen seventy-three, City Planning Commission enacted the Special Park Improvement District along Fifth Avenue and parts of Madison Avenue, specifically to eliminate the ability for developers to set buildings back from Fifth Avenue. The, that Special Park Improvement District was designed very specifically to reinstate the street wall on Fifth Avenue, which is what this proposal proposed to do two years ago, and continues to propose to do. I think I will ask Elliott to just talk about the sculpture on the, on the property.
Thank you, Ward. It's a pleasure to be back here and would remind everybody in Friends of Upper East Side, I agree with your concerns about open space and the need for affordable housing, obviously, something we all care about deeply, and in my years in government, worked very hard to increase the supply thereof, and consequently, the acquisition or the purchase of seven million dollars of, of certificates is very much, I think, a part of this equation here that will contribute to, to that supply. With respect to what Ward said, he's absolutely right. The street wall, I think the continuity of the street wall is something that city's owners have wanted for many, many years, and it was actually during only a very brief period that my dad was able to build the building, was encouraged to build the building with the setback and get the, the bonus. I think it is affirmative zoning that that has been eliminated, and so I think the elimination of that, basically, it's a driveway. I mean, we can describe it as a public open space, a privately owned public space. It's really a driveway that encroaches on the sidewalk, that creates a fair bit of, of inconvenience for pedestrians, and so I think that is really an affirmative step forward in every respect. With respect to the, to the sculpture, castle, as I guess it is formally called, we, we used to call it birdhouse, I'm not sure which is a more appropriate or affirmative name, it, it was created by, my, my dad, when he was in the Navy, befriended a fellow who was an artist. His wife then did the sculpture, and over the years- His wife then did the sculpture, and over the years, my dad was a developer, tried very hard to acquire art from both John Capel and his wife. It's, it's a beautiful sculpture. I've often thought it is one of the most photographed sculptures in the city because people, tourists in particular, going up Fifth Avenue to go to the Met are in the mood to take photographs, and so they take out the picture, take out the camera, or the iPhone these days, snap a picture of it. And so I, I will confess, I had initially thought we might take it and put it back in one of our homes, but hearing the very legitimate public desire to continue to have it in public display, my proposal would be, we'll contribute it to some appropriate public venue and have it be on public display at a park or some location to be determined that, at your suggestion, we would welcome your advice on that.
Just because I can't help myself. I know it's just on the door, but there is a bower leaf of the sculpture and history of the artist on the, you know, I don't get any of this right, maybe, okay, so I'll, I'll stop, but it is, well, maybe I won't. It's in the details. There, there we go. So, whoop. There we go. So at the bottom of this one, there is the sculpture, there is the bower leaf, and there's a little bit of history of that, for what it's for.
And then just finally, you know, obviously, the application that's before us now, before you now, are the modifications to the top of the building, which we do, as we explained in our presentation, we do feel are very appropriate and very much an improvement to the overall design of the building. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any final questions? Okay, if not, let's go ahead and close the hearing. Commissioner Kimbe, will you make a motion to close the hearing?
I'll move.
Commissioner Wilder, would you second that?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed. Commissioner Jefferson, would you like to start this discussion?
Obviously, the building has much improved. I think the, the crown, as they call it, works very well. The proportions, very handsome, and the materiality of the building is quite handsome. The building itself is a type, and this is a creative interpretation of that type, which I can approve.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
I agree. Did you go to the, the view of the model that shows it looking from the south with the neighboring building in the, in the foreground? That one's fine. Back one. Back one, please. There you go. I think it's, I think it's an improvement. One of the things that's interesting about what's happened in this version versus the last for me, that because it got taller, my sense anyway of the relative depth of the setbacks and the crown relative to the base, looks flatter to me. I don't think that renders inappropriate, but I think it's, it's worth noting. And another thing that occurred to me when looking at this view, and it was especially in response to what Schofield said, is that the building next door isn't going anywhere. And, and I think an opportunity was missed in not having the upper two setbacks align with that building. It would have kind of brought that building into the composition of how the corner is read from, from this, you know, from further away, and it would have also made the crown element a lot deeper in, in its reading. If you look at the, the way Fifth Avenue developed, you know, in this area, the crowns usually don't go full width. They're usually kind of a pile of boxes on top that are meant to read as like a single element. Even if they do go full width, the setbacks are significant, and there's kind of a central, central pile of things with stuff that happens on the sides that can be either symmetrical or asymmetrical. And I think here, because it's relatively a shallow setback, I think that the, the top tends to feel a little bit less like those and a little bit more standard apartment building. Again, I don't think those are comments that render it inappropriate, but I think that they might consider that in, at the project as they develop it. It would make it a lot better in its relationship with this building that isn't going anywhere. I think that the rear yard changes are a significant improvement. It's an interesting question as to whether or not it's, it's an appropriate thing to have what's clearly a back facade rendered as a front facade. We talk about that a lot with brownstones even. Buildings, it's, it's even more unusual to have, I can't think of a whole lot of buildings in this neighborhood where even the fanciest, most architecturally significant buildings that have a rear facade that's developed the same material, as, as, you know, the same care, the level of detail as the front facade. I think that the use of the brick is, is, is there for a good choice on the lower floors. And I think that the, the, the reason I think that the topmost mechanical enclosure is acceptable in the limestone is, is because it's read at a distance, it's really not connected to the building below it necessarily, it's kind of just part an element of this, of this guy's. But I think that they, again, they could look with the staff as, as they go forward. It doesn't render it inappropriate for me, but I think that simplifying the back and thinking about it, you know, as a back, it's, it's more kind of typologically correct, I think. And like a confusion, I think, when you're looking at the city from an angle, you kind of, you're able to read it, and this might make that a little bit. Minor comments on a nice job.
Thank you. Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, continuing on the, the comments, I, I agree with the Commissioners. I think that, as Michael just alluded to correctly, that if you look at adjoining building, and Eduardo made the comment as well, that this is a intense, you know, an improvement over the last proposal, as to how they can, you know, whether you, how they can best refine the details, the articulation, I, I leave it to the staff with the applicant. But I think overall, compared to the last time, this is much improved and-
Thank you. Commissioner Wilder?
Yeah, I can find it appropriate. I agree with most of the comments previously stated. I would have liked to see a little more work happen at the crown or at those top few floors in terms of the setback and maybe aligning with the, with the adjacent building. But I, I do like the, I think the symmetry kind of solved the issue that was possibly created with the previously approved design, so, but overall, yeah, I found it appropriate.
Thank you. Commissioner Kimbe?
Yes, overall, I do find it appropriate, but I do believe maybe at the staff level, there could be a little more massaging, especially within the crown, just some of the proportions, and also the fenestration placement. And I think one thing that's happening is if there's a struggle between symmetry and asymmetry, and if that was just massaged a little more, I think it would read more, more clearly.
Okay, thank you. It sounds like Commissioners find this appropriate, but that they would like the, the applicant to work with staff on some of the details on the crown, articulation and fenestration, and I think finalizing some of the details with the staff. Are you comfortable reading that? Okay. The crown, yeah, yeah, working with staff. Thank you.
985 Fifth Avenue, Metropolitan Museum, oh, well, one, one? 985, right? An apartment building designed by Rexler and Schimanti and built in 1969-1970. Application is to amend certificate of appropriateness 24-05651 for demolition, for demolishing the existing building and constructing a new building, including enlarging and redesigning certain aspect of the new building. I note that the existing building is not one of the building for which the Metropolitan Museum Historic District was designated, and that the Commission recently approved its demolition and the construction of the new apartment building on the site. I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the revised height of the base and shaft of the building of the previous approved new building will align with the adjacent building to the north, in keeping with the prevailing height of building bases and shaft within the streetscape. The overall revised height of the building is within the range of heights found on buildings on this block. That the revised primary facade is articulated in an arrangement of base, shaft, and cascading setback, featuring prominent elements at the top of the building, which would be consistent with the base organization and hierarchy of elements of many of the historic apartment buildings along Fifth Avenue. That the revised design of the rear facade features a neutral color palette, high solid-to-void ratio, and simplified details, which are typical of a secondary facade at large apartment buildings in the historic district. The proposed work at the lower floors of the rear of the new building will not be visible from public telephone. That the proposed change in plane of the rear facade at the upper floors will not diminish the central green space. That the revised design rooftops and mechanical enclosures will recall the historic treatment of water towers, enclosure, and other utilitarian rooftop elements historically found at some large apartment buildings within this historic district. And the, and the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historical count, the Metropolitan Museum Historic District. However, I find that the revised crown of the building at the utmost level residential-
Commissioner Jefferson, I think you could just go to the-
-lockier, heavier presence that's less successful.
Mr. Jefferson, I think you could just go to the recommendation.
It should be, with the help of the staff, rethought and rethought.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think working with the staff will look at the proportions of the uppermost portions of the crown and also the fenestration at that, that part of the building.
Okay.
Okay, and alignment. Okay, Commissioner Goldblum, would you like to second that motion?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Mark, will you call the vote?
Vice Chair, Master?
Aye.
Mr. Chen?
Aye.
Bo Blum?
Sunday?
Aye.
Jefferson?
Aye.
Wilder?
Aye.
Favor, none opposed, the motion passed.
Okay, congratulations, that's been approved with modifications. Let's move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number 12, LPC 26-03235. An application for a binding report in the Borough of Manhattan, Block 1111, Lot 1, 1,005th Avenue, the Metropolitan Museum of Art Individual and Interior Landmark. This is a Beaux Arts and Roman Style museum building designed by Vox and Mold, R.M. Hunt, McKemidin White, and others, and built in 1864 to 1965, with designated interior spaces, including an entrance festival, the Great Hall, the passageway corridors, the grand staircase, halls, balconies, and all vaults and domes above these halls and balconies, designed by Richard Morris Hunt and Richard Howland Hunt, with consulting architect George B. Post, and built in 1895 to 1902. And the application is to install exterior and interior signage.
Hi, hello. Hi, it's nice to be with you all. My name is Brett Guyard, and I'm the Head of Capital Projects at the Metropolitan Museum of Art. I'm here today with my colleagues from the Met, as well as Henry Miller, Principal at Bayer Blinderbell Architects and Planners, and Laura Varaci, Principal of LVCK, a BBB Studio, who will be sharing the presentation. We're here today to present our proposed strategy and approach to wayfinding for public signage on the exterior of our Fifth Avenue frontage, as well as the interior of the Great Hall. In 2023, we came before you all to present the addition of four digital displays in the Great Hall, and we received feedback during our public hearing that the Great Hall had become visually noisy with signage. There were some other less-nice ways of saying that at the time. We listened to the feedback, and we've been working since to establish a proposal for wayfinding that would allow for a unified and consistent system of signage for our interior and exterior arrival locations. Accessibility for our visitors is critical to the Met's mission. As you all know, we have many projects underway, including a new fully accessible entrance at 83rd Street, which was approved by this committee last year. And we want our visitors to be able to find these through clear and consistent wayfinding for entry, exit, and circulation. Our signage proposal aims to establish a clear system that will be adaptable to the museum's ever-evolving needs, respect the powerful architecture of our landmark exterior and interior of the Great Hall, as well as remove the visual clutter in many areas that has accrued over time. And with that, I will hand it over to Henry Miller.
Thank you, Brett. I'm Henry Miller, Principal at Bayer Blinderbell Architects. Good to be here today to present this project. I'm just going to provide some kind of overview of the building and the history of the spaces, and then I'll turn it over to Laura, who can talk about the specifics of the wayfinding. So quickly, the, the Met was landmarked in 1967. You can see the areas that were extended at that time in blue. It was added to over time. You can see those additions in green. The Great Hall is Wing D, built in 1902, at the Fifth Avenue side there. The interior of Wing D is also an interior landmark. You can see the extents of the interior landmark. That was designated in 1977. That's really the entirety of the Great Hall and the grand stair, which brings you up to the European Paintings Galleries on the second floor. The Great Hall is really an iconic interior space and public space for the City of New York. Certainly, in approaching a strategy for public wayfinding and how to clarify that for visitors to the museum, both those who are New Yorkers and those from around the world, it's critical to understand how we can integrate that signage into the historic fabric. The idea we started with was really the Great Hall is a great sorter. It's a sorter of people into the museum, so how do you start to create wayfinding that helps support that? And you can see a quote here from curator Emeritus Morrie Hecksher, kind of reinforcing how important this is as a public space in the city. The Great Hall has certainly evolved over time. Opened in 1902, you can see it's had a series of different uses. It's been used for the display of art, tapestry. It was restored or renovated in 1970 as part of the 100th anniversary by Roche Dinklerloo. And you can see it there in the low right-hand corner. Today, you know, there's been ever-increasing visitors over time to the Met, and that just puts more and more pressure on the wayfinding to be able to clarify, manage, and sort the crowds as they come through. Similarly, at the exterior, the, the point of arrival at the Met, you can see that also has evolved over time. There is originally a smaller stair at Wing D, which was increased. That was also done in 1970 as a way to allow for more people to come into the museum, but also really extended the building out into the plaza as, as part of the arrival experience for the public. And you can see that here very much activated. And so, you know, really, the Great Hall and the plaza together are part of the, the public arrival experience. So you'll see both of these in our presentation. And I think over time, the requirements for, for wayfinding, for visitor experience have changed. You can see, in fact, that there has been some, you know, furniture, kiosks, things like that, that have been removed over the last series of years as technology has become out of date- that have been removed over the last series of years as technology has become out of date. But also to kind of disencumber some of the architecture. You can see on the left, the colonnades previously had ticketing booths. Those were removed. That was a project in twenty nineteen to move those out of the Great Hall. So this is really part, I think, of a larger narrative about really letting the architecture, you know, sing in the Great Hall and figuring out a way for the wayfinding to support that. And with that, I will turn it over to Laura Verraci to talk about the wayfinding.
Hi, my name is Laura Verraci, and I'm principal of LVCK, which is a studio within Bayer Blender Bell, focusing on environmental graphics and wayfinding. As the wayfinding solutions evolved in the Great Hall, the Met started to test out things like the application of the new brand color, the red. But yeah, even with that, the amount of signage proliferated and without a overarching hierarchy of sign types and messaging. So that was one of the things we're trying to solve. Those, the shortcomings of a lack of sign type family hierarchy, delivering specific message at specific locations, becomes more evident as the number of visitors increases kind of exponentially and is only projected to continue to increase. Peer institutions are developing cohesive wayfinding systems as they face increased tourism. Pylon forms are becoming a frequent tool in their kit of parts of sign type family because it can deliver a larger quantity of destination information at a close-range pedestrian scale. We took these into account as we developed the sign type family for the Great Hall, looking at sightlines that are delineated and informed by the architecture of the Great Hall. Things higher up are meant to, sign types positions higher up in the Great Hall can be read at a farther distance and have dispersion information. Sign types that are of a shorter height in the Great Hall in the blue and yellow zone can have more granular information and be a slightly different scale. And those elements will work, are meant to work in harmony. We analyzed the existing signage in the Great Hall and noticed that there was kind of a clustering of sign stanchions and sign signage solutions at pinch points of doorways and the colonnades. And you can see that on this plan of existing signage where there's clusters of sign types all grouped together. And what we are proposing to do with the updated sign type family program is to disperse sign types more in line with the geometry of the Great Hall. As Henry mentioned, we see the Great Hall as the sorter because that is the architecture. Three colonnades, three decisions into the interior of the of the Met. And we've located the sign types accordingly. And this, this is a floor plan view of that same model showing an even distribution of sign intervention in the Great Hall. What those sign type tags look like in elevation is this family of a unified system of sign pylons and banners and wall-mounted signs, along with an information desk touchscreen kiosk. And we'll go into more details. In developing the finishes of the sign type family, we took cues from the cues and tonalities and values of the limestone and the terrazzo floor, as well as featuring an historic bronze finish that's appropriate to the age of the Great Hall. We've modeled the sign types in the space to study and make sure that the heights are aligned with the coursing lines of the stone and the proportions of the banners have been elongated from what is existing and narrowed to be more in line with the architecture, more respectful to the architecture. Sorry, this is the view looking west from the center of the Great Hall and views looking south and north. So there's a consistency for the visitor, which builds confidence in the expectation of I will find information I need in looking in these different directions. Our diligent process with all the Met stakeholders and the architects proved out when we were installed a prototype and mockups in the Great Hall. So you see in this photo, the realization of those modeled rendered views where we have a functioning prototype that is visible above the information desk. This key, the model of the touchscreen kiosk here on the north side of the desk. The banners right now are paper, just to let you know those aren't the finish finishes, but all in all, the system hung together. The details of each sign type I'll go through briefly. The pylon is triangular, taking cues from the geometry of the floor and also to have something that's both prominent yet not too prominent. It's in a niche that is triangular and fits, and yet it functions from all three sides for visitors coming to and from the Great Hall in those three directions. And it's also been designed with minimal impact into the flooring. We will be feeding the power and CAD-six cable into the screen through the floor, which has happened in the past with those ticketing kiosks, and then a simple anchor. And this entire pylon can be deconstructed and removed. I should say the panels are removable from the frame structure. The banners now have an in-obtrusive connection in the top of the colonnade. There's no actual penetration into stone. Instead, the brass, the custom bronze and brass connections are also, do not go across the colonnade. So currently, you know, you have a rod that goes all the way across, and this allows more open space and air above the banner. And the banner is on a S E G frame so that it stays taut and straight and is very lightweight. That same lightweight approach is for the amenity IDs that are on the returns of the portals going into the ticketing and gallery, future gallery space. And this also has minimal anchors into the stone sofa above. The wall mounts, wall-mounted directional signage provides minimal impact because we've sized them specifically to the limestone coursing and allowed the mounting pieces to be hidden behind the panel, and they will be inserted into the mortar joint, so we're not damaging the stone. The information desk touchscreen kiosk will have minimal impact into the existing information desk. It will have a bronze grommet in what currently is the pamphlet display area and connect to the wiring. But this entire thing is designed to be under fifty pounds, so it can be lifted and removed by a single person. This also is designed, as it's shown to meet accessibility needs for touchscreen information, as well as serving multilingual needs of visitors and be another device that the staff working, the visitor experience staff working the desk can utilize to help people find specifics of what they're looking for. That was the inside. Now moving the sign type program to the exterior plaza and validating that we can keep a lot of the same principles that we developed for the Great Hall into the plaza, knowing that people will experience the plaza first before, and so we're kind of setting up expectations with these pylon forms, which are not foreign to the exterior, as we'll go through. Here you can see the existing marketing pylon, which is located along the plaza edge to Fifth Avenue. And there currently are two single-sided pylons at the eighty-first and eighty-third street entrances, but we're proposing to replace those. At the exterior plaza and entries, there was a similar, you know, you could say proliferation of signage to solve many different problems since there was not a cohesive directional system in place. And you see the cluttering of signs on the eighty-second street stair and kind of a lack of signage and directionals by the other entrances. So we're proposing to remedy that, providing visitors some directional information as they approach the plaza, as well as distributing signs at the entry doors. This is an example of that lack of sign type consistency in form and language, as well as a lack of hierarchy outside. We applied the same principles of sightlines and scale of messaging on signage that we developed for the Great Hall to the exterior, knowing that there's identification that the Met, this is an entrance to the Met higher up, and then information about the granularity of what's, why should I choose this entrance? And what entrance do I need at that blue zone? Our locations that we're proposing have a consistency, and the consistency of these three entrances having a brand ID for each entrance, a single-sided pylon, these are movable pylons, and two directional pylons at the plaza approach edge. First, we'll review the need for a consistent entry Met brand ID. As Brett had mentioned, accessibility is paramount. And with the new eighty-third street entrance, there'll be more ways for people to enter who have mobility challenges because the stairs, as beautiful as they are, and we all sit on them, they're foreboding for some new visitors, some visitors. So right now, the visual is calling to you for this top of the stairs, and we think we can improve that visual for the eighty-first and eighty-third street entrance. This is just an example of that the visibility challenges. Looking towards eighty-first, looking towards eighty-third, and then also, of course, what happens if you're coming from the east, coming from the subway line, and a car is in front, many, many vehicles coming down Fifth Ave could block the actual door visibility. So we're proposing to utilize what the Met already does at eighty-second and applying it to eighty-first and eighty-third. And that's why we're proposing this higher consistency of a higher location above the doors. The banner itself, we think we can make improvements on the mounting of the banner at eighty-second street by making it more taut and removing the visibility of the tension cords. And similarly, for, this is the banner attachment detail proposed for eighty-first and eighty-third, where there would be a concealed frame, a removable concealed frame, to help keep that banner material taut. This is the elevation for eighty-first street, showing the redesign of the existing single-sided pylon. And the banner above the door, we're reserving space for donor names or entry destination name at the door itself, in line with what was approved last December for the eighty-third street entrance. Here you'll notice that the existing pylon at eighty-third is to the right of the doorway. We're proposing to move that to the left, consistent with the eighty-first street and that detail. We will note that this height is consistent with the existing heights and width. At eighty-second street, a, you know, oh, I should say, this is not mounted to the facade similar to the existing. It is ground-mounted with footer. So that application wouldn't make sense at the top of the stairs. And we've taken the pylon form language and shrunk it to be a movable stanchion, but still have a pylon instead of what is typically used as the lollipops. And this allows for changeable information for Met's operation and security. And this is located at the top of the stairs and at the base of the stair. The last element of the plaza sign type family is a proposed three-sided directional pylon, taking the, and the need for that is these views are expressing the visual impact, which we feel is minimal in the plaza for just two locations that could really deliver a lot of important information for visitors, especially first-time visitors. And that form language and height is minimal compared to the visual clutter of the street vendors and street carts and things that are happening. And it's, so we are confident in the consideration of this form language of the three-sided pylon, that it can deliver information for people approaching the Met from the north and the south, as well as from the east. The approach, one side, the approach from the north at the eighty-third street pylon, the eighty-first street would be on the south, would feature a a screen, a digital display that would have a slow rotating slideshow, just all static imagery. You know, similar to what you could imagine the Link NYC. This is actually a smaller scale, the same scale that's on the inside, just a forty-three inch screen, so small scale. And the other side, though, facing the residences, the residences on Fifth Ave would not see the digital screen. They would see just directional information as here on the wider side of the pylon. These are the details, as I said. And the last final thing is there's an existing parking pylon that we are proposing to re-clad to improve the kind of visibility of it within the tree barks and trunks, and adding the red to make the P more visible.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Okay, we do have somebody signed up to speak. We have Zainab Turan from the Friends of the Upper East Side.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Zainab Turan, speaking on behalf of Friends of the Upper East Side. Friends Preservation Committee supports the new public arrival signage on the plaza and in the Great Hall, noting that it was much needed to improve wayfinding through consistent color and standardized design. And we appreciate the cleaner, more refined banner attachment designs. We commend the museum for investing in making the space more accessible and welcoming for everyone across all ages and ability levels. We only ask that the illumination of the digital screens on the exterior pylons be carefully reviewed to reduce reflection, distraction, and ambient light in the plaza, even though the screens face the museum rather than the Fifth Avenue location. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote testimony.
Those joining via Zoom who wish to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function, after which you'll be promoted to panelist. We ask you to unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. The first speaker will be Megan Fitzpatrick.
Hello Commissioners, Megan Fitzpatrick, speaking on behalf of Landmark West. The Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee commends the Met for trying to improve wayfinding and reduce visual clutter inherent in most large institutions today. We believe the proposed changes are appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else joining via Zoom who wishes to speak, please raise your hand. I'd seen none. I'll note for the record that Manhattan Community Board's eight and five recommend approval.
Great. It sounds like you had a lot of supportive comments. Um, Commissioners, any final questions? Okay, if not, let's go ahead and close the hearing. Um, Commissioner Chen, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Commissioner Ginsburg, would you second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed. Commissioner Goldblum, would you like to start this discussion?
Thank you very much. Let me say first, I, I think that the Met is to be greatly praised for this effort. It's very important. It's very necessary. Go to the Met probably once a week and experience this room pretty much every time. Try to avoid it uh, when you can, because it's such a zoo. But it's, the need for uh, wayfinding and organizational support for the for the, is definitely very, very severe. I think that the general approach is appropriate. I do have some specifics that, I have a client that I've been fighting with for five years about signage. So I've, I've become much more knowledgeable about signage than I ever wanted to be. So maybe this, these comments reflect that reality that's been forced on me, but so be it. Um, okay, on the interior, I think amenity C, the banners, should be the same height as the uh, other banners. Having that line struck, you know, the, the zones that you project in your diagram, I think are, I think for me, the fact that the long and skinny banners, which are your amenity C banners on the left here, should be at the same height as the other banners. I don't see, I, I think, I think it kind of supports that kind of stratification and clarity that you're going for to have them to be shorter. And I don't think it harms your, your wayfinding in any way. I think that the um, um, local sign D was really very, I think that for me is the, the most uh, pleasing sign. And what it made me feel was that the relative proportions of red to ivory kind of vary in a way that, when, once I saw them, I kind of felt like that maybe there's too much red. And I'm happy to hear what others say, but I mean, like on the exterior, you have just a little top of red, just to kind of call it out. And then on the interior, you have some that are half, some that are whole. And it just, and when I looked at D and I thought, that is the most relaxing looking sign. It gets the information across, it blends, it's deferent. Now, yes, it doesn't have the branding, but, and is there a way to achieve the goals, the branding goals, with a little bit less punch in the nose? Um, um, on the exterior, I think that um, I, again, I think that the general dis- the consolidation is, is very, very important, well needed and generally appropriate. I question the need for these two banners, BB two and BB one, to go full width. The logo is a square, as we see in the bottom left. And I don't see the benefit to the public or to the landmark of covering that much masonry when, you know, the brand effectiveness could be achieved with a square um, in the same location at the same size. Um, and, and we'd see more of the building and a little bit less of the red, which I, I know that in case of BB two, that's what's there now, and they have every right to keep it. But I think it would be um, an improvement to the landmark to have more of the masonry showing without, I think, any diminution in the readability of the building. I think that the new signage method, the frames are fantastic, beautiful. The um, the way that the penetrations in the interior stone, totally appropriate. I think that the rest of the uh, pylons uh, on the exterior are fine. I, my only suggestion is that for the uh, two pylons that are kind of in, in front of the secondary lower, the, the on great entrances, I, I would, I think that the, the, the integration of the, that's the AA three. The screens are fine. I just think that the side that faces Fifth Avenue should, should be no wider than the other two sides. I think that the street view, looking at the building that they showed from across the street, they kind of took up a little bit too much volume for me. And I think that you could again, achieve the, the goals with a equilateral triangle uh, that had a little bit less prominence uh, when looking at the building from across the street.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I think um, this is uh, similar to the Louvre when the paid to their office. Uh, they had the, the wayfinding, the pyramid was, was a wayfinding. I think this is uh, a, an improvement over what they currently have is much needed. Uh, and I think Michael made a good point about the color. It's a very strong wavelength. The red is one of the most catching. Uh, but I think they did a proper balance here. I think just obviously the only thing new is the one eighty three uh, street entrance with the, with the new. I, overall, I have, I, I, I can find that appropriate with um, most of the uh, the thing. Obviously, a little tweak here and there, like Michael suggested.
Thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg?
Uh, in general, I agree. I think this is a definite improvement. My comment on BB one, BB one was maybe aligning the outside edges with either the window above or the door below might make sense. I'm not sure. It has to become a square. And a little more red may be useful to flag to people this is an entrance.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilder?
Yeah, to kind of echo what's been said so far, I think um, I think you guys did a great job uh, presenting as well as the, the design ideas behind the presentation. Um, I think the one comment which could be minor is, I was looking at the pylon mockup, the triangular one, and it, I don't know if the proximity to the wall is not a great enough distance to, for all three sides to make sense with information. Just feels like one in that corner is kind of tight. This was sheet fifteen, I guess?
We could provide more photos.
Yeah, yes, no, so, no, I'm just, but that was, that's kind of my only comment. But I think everything else was, was appropriate.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Kumbey?
Overall, I like what has been presented. Um, the design of the signage, the um, the color palette. Um, and then also just the um, using that kit of parts to create, um, I guess, different instances of getting information across, which is pretty much a signage package. Um, the only thing I would say is um, it's there. It just, some tweaks here and there, and I think the Commissioners have provided the input about where those areas are needed.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
This is one of those uh, graphic design problems that they give at school, where a color is so powerful, red, which is a very powerful color. And architecture together becomes difficult, how, which one is more dominant than the other? And if you go back to page twenty three, the interior, this one, I mean, I agree with Michael that the two signs in the center are fine, with the white and red. But I do think the, the corner ones, the vertical ones are fine in red, because they define the edges. And they make, they define the architecture, and they're not the same, just four, or proportion the same, they, they defined it. And I think the, the, if you go back to the last image you have, the one that have to do with filling in the panels are these. These are very difficult, because you know, the, the, the architecture is weaker than the red. And the red takes over and in that, I'm worried that if you cut it back to a square or another figure, it becomes a exit sign. And so I don't know how, what proportion that should be. That's a difficult one. But I think in the hall, it's very beautifully done. And I think the proportions of red on this side, just the edges, very nicely done.
Thank you. Okay, so Commissioner Goldblum, are you comfortable, you know, working with staff on some of the suggestions that you had? Thank you.
Regarding one thousand Fifth Avenue Metropolis Museum of Art, individual and interior landmark, the application is to install interior and exterior signage. I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the proposed signage will replace existing modern signage. Its installation will not alter or eliminate any historic fabric or obscure any significant views of architectural features of the building, site, or designated interior space. That the proposed signage campaign will be in keeping with the institutional character of the site and address in a holistic way the programmatic needs of the museum and is, and is consistent with previous commission approved signage at the site and signage historically found in museum buildings. That consistent sign, design and color pa- color palette of the signage program, featuring red and off white directional signage with bronze framing and structural elements at both exterior and interior of the museum, will be harmonious with the historic materials and color palette of the building. That the exterior replacement banner at the spaniel above eighty second street will be well scaled to the facade. Reduced attachment points will not obscure or distract from views of the entrance. That the proposed signage at the transom panels on the eighty six, eighty, eighty first street entrance, consisting of bronze finished pin mounted letters will be in keeping with the commission approved signage transoms of the third street entrances and will harmonize with other metalwork at the building's base. That the proposed stanchions and pylons throughout the plaza and entrance steps will be modest in scale relative to this monumental facade. And will be limited in placement to the visitor parking entrances. That illumination at the exterior pylons will be limited in display screens at the museum facing sides of the pylons, featuring rotating static imagery, and will not be perceptible in primary views of the museum from Fifth Avenue. That the interior banners will be well scaled to the colonnades and piers where they will be mounted, will not obscure decorative masonry and will be mounted to minimize penetrations into historic masonry. That the placement of the pylons at the four locations throughout the Great Hall will relate to the design of the historic lots of flooring and will not block any significant views throughout the designated interior space. That the limited size of the information desk directory kiosks and their placement at the north and south sides of the information desk will minimize their presence when entering the Great Hall from the main entrance. That only a modest amount of illuminated signage, including digital display screens with rotating static imagery of the pylons and interactive screens at the information desk directory kiosks, will be introduced into the designated interior and will enhance connectivity and language accessibility at this world-class institution. The pylons, information desk directory kiosk will be mounted using a minimum number of penetrations that the interior directional plaque signs will be mounted at plain masonry at the north and south transverse passageways and at the great stair outside the main space of the entrance hall, thereby minimizing their visual impact. And that the cumulative effect of the proposed signage campaign, in connection with the previously approved signage over the eighty third street that, that doors, will not overwhelm this monumental complex, museum complex, plaza, surrounding parkland and designated interior. However, the applicant will work with the staff to address the suggestions for modifications related to alignments, color, placing proportions, and other comments that uh, came up at, at the comments uh, of this meeting.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
Thank you. And Mark, will you call the vote?
Vice Chair Master?
Aye.
Mr. Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Mr. Kumbey?
Aye.
Mr. Jefferson?
Aye.
Wilder?
Aye.
Seven in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
Okay, that's been approved. Um, please continue to work with staff. Okay, what we're gonna do is, um, we're actually gonna go back um, to six sixteen Avenue of the Americas. Um, and Corey is gonna speak on this.
I'm gonna go ahead and read this item into the record again. Uh, this was presented earlier today, however, there was not a quorum of Commissioners present. Uh, but we do have that now, so we're gonna go back to that item. That's public hearing, item number ten, LPC twenty six dash zero two four five one, an application for a certificate of appropriateness, in the borough of Manhattan, block eight twenty, lot seventy five oh five, six sixteen Avenue of the Americas, in the Ladies Mile Historic District. Bozart style apartment store building designed by Delam- Delamos and Cordes and built in eighteen ninety five to ninety seven. That application is to install signage. Um, Abby, if you could advance the slides, I would appreciate it. Um, most Commissioners saw this. I'm just gonna very briefly touch on it. This is the Segal Cooper Building, Grand Apartment Store Building. Uh, as you can see, there's a variety of signage on the building currently, some of which has been approved by the Commissioners over the years. Uh, some of it, uh, which was not, uh, but generally posters and whatnot put in some of the, the windows. Uh, the location in question is to the uh, go back one if you don't mind, please. Yes, here, the storefront in the bottom left, currently where the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond signs uh, are, taking over that space, Burlington Coat Factory Store, next slide. Uh, there is staff level signage replacement in this middle bay, going from Bed Bath &amp; Beyond to the Burlington signage, uh, next slide. And here's the subject corner of, of the tenant space in question. Um, and the applicants are proposing a variety of signage types. Abby, next slide, please. Most of which incur inside the building. Next slide. Next slide. The applicants did present a variety of historic imagery to show just how busy uh, the streetscape was and how much signage and other activity there was uh, back in the day. And next slide. Next. Okay. So what, what you see here shows all the signage. There are more than three signage types. Uh, so that automatically made, uh, meant that the staff couldn't review this signage package. However, much of it, as I mentioned, does occur within the building. So on the Avenue of the Americas facade on the top, uh, everything that you see there, the red uh, with the signage on it in the transoms is in the interior of the building, setback several feet, as are the three sort of display like signs below that. Uh, there are one or two that are LED screens or illuminated boxes on, on, in that particular location. And on the image on the bottom, the nineteenth street facade, at that corner bay, the bay on the far right, that has the similar signage, the setback interior signage in the transom with illuminated signs and also LED boxes below. But everything to the left of that, the four bays to the left of that, uh, all of those are non illuminated, uh, just sort of poster like boxes also in the interior. And those four bays also were proposed with a red uh, film, red colored film in the transoms, because there are mechanical or back of house spaces up there. Um, and the Commission, uh, Commissioners that were present did discuss this proposal, and there was consensus of support for all of the signage types shown. Again, finding that they were largely interior and limited, given the scale of the display windows. Uh, the one point of discussion was the applied red film. And uh, since this was presented earlier today, the applicants have thought this over and have agreed to uh, change that to a grayscale film. So it would no longer have the red in those four bays on the elevation drawing on the bottom, uh, but would continue to have the rest of the signage that you see at the corner storefront bay and along the Avenue of the Americas. So that's, that was the proposal with that, with that subsequent change. Commissioner Ginsburg, did, I don't know if you had any questions or had a chance to review it? Okay.
Okay, so um, what should we do? Should we read them?
Go around quickly again?
Oh, talk and talk. Okay. Um, I'll go ahead and start. Um, I'm supportive of the signage. I was supportive of the red, and now I'm supportive of the um, of the gray, uh, gray film. Commissioner, oh, you know what? Let's go around. Oh, you know what? Okay, let's do that. Go ahead, Commissioner Wilder.
Uh, yes, I think um, with the new-
Yes, I think with the new change, I can definitely find it appropriate.
Commissioner Equembe?
I find it appropriate as well with the new change.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Applaud.
Commissioner Chen? And Commissioner Ginsburg? Great. Okay. Okay, Commissioner Wilder, would you feel comfortable reading the motion?
I'm out of LPC 26-02451, 616 Avenue of the Americas, Ladies Mile Historic District. A Bozart's Department Store Building designed by Delamos and Cordes and built in 1895 to 97. Application is to install signage. I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features which contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Ladies Mile Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the installation, approve with modifications. Just straight approval, okay. Recommend approval, finding that the installation of the proposed signage will not damage or obscure any significant architectural features that this grand-scale department store building has historically had a variety of signage in the proposed signage package consisting of internally illuminated letters and logos mounted on the interior software adhered. Vinyl lettering and branded window film internally, illuminated lightbox signs and LED signs will be in keeping with other signage on the building and the variety of signage traditionally found at large commercial buildings throughout the historic district. That the proposed adhesive signs and internally illuminated signs and LED screens will be installed at the interior and set back from the storefront glass and will have a secondary presence to the highly ornamental features and large storefront openings at the base of the building. That the proposed illuminated and LED signs will be well scaled to the large display window and transom assemblies and will not obscure their transparency. And that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural historic character of the building or the Ladies Mile Historic District.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Equembe, would you second that motion?
Second.
Thank you. And Mark, will you call the vote?
Vice Chair Master?
Aye.
Mr. Chen?
Aye.
Ginsburg?
Aye.
Equembe?
Aye.
Jefferson?
Aye.
Wilder?
Aye.
With six in favor and all none opposed, the motion passes. And we note for the record that Commissioner Goldblum is recused.
Yeah, thank you, that's been approved. Now, okay, let's move to the next item.
Right, next item is public hearing, item number 13. LPC 26-03037, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 1721, lot 35, 260 Lenox Avenue in the Mount Morris Park Historic District. This is a rowhouse designed by Charles H. Beer and built in 1885 to 86. And the application is to install storefront infill and construct a rooftop addition.
Good afternoon, my name is Angel Ion. I'm the principal of Ion Studio Architecture and Preservation and I'm delighted to be here today to share with you the work that is being proposed at 260 Lenox in Harlem. We are, we're referring to a property located on the northeast corner of Lenox and 120, west 123rd Street in Harlem, located within the boundaries of the Mount Morris Park Historic District. It's also within the boundaries of the National Registry Designated District. I want to share with you a few images about the history and development of this property. On the left-hand side, you see one of the oldest photographs that we see from the 1840s that shows that corner building seen on, from Lenox Avenue looking up. The photograph on the right is kind of hard to tell, there's someone shoulder is kind of covering the building and it's kind of inconclusive, but nonetheless is one that suggests that kind of corner building built in masonry. The photograph on the left shows the building from that corner, from 123rd Street looking west. The church that you see there is the Fessos, it's just located across the street. And what you see is this kind of glass corner on the second floor that it's interesting because it's indicative that, that there is this new glazed enclosure at that level. And then there are this kind of two upper levels that are almost like floating, but it's all supported by structure and so on. What that is, is just the corner of a glazed enclosure that was installed in the building. Our assumption here is that this is, this is a building that was built in the 1890s. It's one of five adjacent properties that were built by the same developer at the same time in the late 1890s. And that what happened here is that most likely when the subway was installed at the beginning of the 20th century and Harlem became a more prominent location, there were a series of developments in the area and on the block that led to this intervention that installed this two-story-high glazed storefront for commercial use. We believe that, that's also supported by the fact that if you look in the top of the building, you have one and two chimneys. And you can tell that later on the photo, on the plans, you'll see that there are chimneys also at the cellar. So our assumption is that those chimneys were running from the cellar all the way up to the top of the building. And of course, they were interrupted by that second floor enclosure and that's just another indication that it's not original to the building. Nonetheless, this is the condition of the building in 1940s, these two-story storefront. A couple of details to point out. On the ground floor, you'll see a chamfer corner at the chamfer entrance, right at the corner. There's also another recess entrance on Lenox Street. There is, there are at least two more entrances on this side of Lenox and another sort of like middle entrance that appears to be providing access to the interior of the building. Two more photographs from the same period from the 1940s. The photograph on the left, it shows the two-story storefront at the extension of the lot. And the photograph on the left, on the right, shows that two-story storefront seen from Lenox Avenue as it meets the building next door. One, this one on the right kind of shows more clearly that kind of recess entrance on Lenox, separate from the entrance at the corner that we had talked about before. And this one over here also shows that recess entrance on 123rd Street. You can tell that the door is just recessed maybe 16 inches or so from the actual street front. By the 1970s, when, 1971, when the district was designated, those storefronts have been modified and there was a lot of changes. And you can also tell just by looking at the photograph that all those windows and enclosure had started to deteriorate. The assumption here that those were all wood frame windows that probably didn't take, didn't have the capacity to sustain the width of all that large plate glass and that led to a lot of deterioration. And then on the ground floor, they had installed roll-up gates that had kind of covered that storefront and especially that chamfer entrance. Here's another photograph showing just, not just the corner, but also the west 123rd Street facade with the extension. And you can tell also that that second floor that is exposed, as it was also in the photograph from the 1940s, consists of a combination of narrower panes with operable units and large wider fixed panes. Here's a photograph from 123rd Street looking west, Fessos Church in the background. And this kind of shows that one story, two-story storefront looking from, looking west and the building, the two stories floors above as a backdrop. By the 1980s, the storefront glazing had been removed and the storefront had been all border up and there was not much left. This is the current condition of the building. Those, that two-floor storefront had been pretty much border up. The masonry on the upper levels, on the right-hand side, you see that they've done some brownstone resurfacing of their poor quality. The brickwork has been painted red. And as I mentioned before, all that storefront had just been altered and patched up and covered up. Here's another photo of the storefront from 123rd Street, just showing all the current condition of that storefront that's pretty much nonoriginal. Floor plans, three-dimensional view of the existing building condition showing the four-story building with the two-story extension. And these are studies that we prepared that are a form of, to summarize the historic information that we found on the archival photograph, kind of showing the pattern of that two-story, two-story high storefront and the combination on the second floor of larger, wider fixed panes and operable units on narrower side guys. It also shows on the west 123rd, 23rd Street facade, that main entrance to the upper level and then those two recess entrances that were adjacent to it. The corner entrance at the chamfer, at the chamfer and the recess entrance on Lenox. Some of the alterations that took place over the years that you can tell from the photograph, onings were added, mountings were also added, subsequent alterations, roll-up gates, more onings that took place over the years. The chimneys were also removed and these are the elevations showing the existing condition. So what we are proposing is to reinstate that two-story-high storefront on the one end and then on the other end also, we're proposing a rooftop addition with a mechanical enclosure to hide all the mechanical equipment. The proposed ground floors, first and second floor enclosure, it's pretty much mimicking all the information to the extent that we were able to obtain from that archival research. The only change is that the two doors on Lenox, on 123rd Street, that used to be recessed, they're now being brought back to the street line and they will no longer be recessed because those are not gonna be doors, those are gonna be windows for the residential unit located on this building. In essence, this, the building will have retail on the ground floor, on part of the ground floor and then residential total security is on the rest of the other floors. So these are existing and proposed storefront plans. The one on the bottom is just existing ground floor and then the second, the one on the top is the proposed storefront on the ground floor. And then existing and proposed elevations on the ground floor. The one in the middle is just the 123rd Street, existing and the one on the top is the proposed. And the two at the bottom are existing and proposed elevations on Lenox storefronts on Lenox. This is the existing and proposed floor plans for those, the glazed enclosure on the second floor. And these are elevations showing the existing and proposed storefronts at that level. And the other alteration that we're having here is that if they, if you look at the historic photograph, those narrower windows used to go all the way down to the floor and those are now being shortened to three feet so that you can have operable windows above that, but a fixed panel below that. Storefront details of the proposed conditions, the materials that we're proposing, it's just to simply restore the brownstone on the Lenox facade, remove the coating on the 123rd Street facade and treat the brick, just glazed storefront on the two levels, on the two lower levels, painted to match that brownstone. We don't know what the color was, but that's gonna be a painted metal finish. And then for the rooftop, we're proposing a zinc finish and also for the mechanical enclosure, a color that will be similar to the zinc. And these are the existing and proposed views. This was in, on Lenox, looking uptown from Atlas Church, the existing and proposed conditions. You can see the rooftop addition started to see minimally there. This is across from Lenox where you can see the existing and proposed condition. We also have to extend the chimney that is at the lot line building so that that chimney could be used in the future by both properties. This is on Lenox, looking downtown. And at the end of that block, right before the red building, you can see the existing condition and the proposed glazed enclosure. On the 123rd Street facade, there's a large tree that kind of prevents you from seeing the existing condition, but we prepared a render without the tree just to show how that rooftop addition meets the back of the wall. And then we're also proposing a glass guardrail at that, at the top of that second floor terrace at the extension. Looking from 125th Street, you can tell that, you can see that there is some visibility for the rooftop addition, but it gets kind of lost with the business of the chimneys and the gables of the church across the street. And looking from 123rd Street on the east direction, when you step back, you can see a little bit more of that rooftop addition from that perspective. Looking in Lenox uptown, again, there are trees, but we took them out just to show how the rooftop addition could be a little bit more visible from that perspective, but it's just against the backdrop of the building in the corner that I know is, is Wright High School. I forgot the name of the building. And these are just renders to show you the proposed building and the existing building and proposed rooftop addition from different perspective. We have a mechanical enclosure on the roof to hide all the mechanical equipment. We also have, we tried to relocate the equipment also to the second floor terrace. And we also have an enclosure there with mechanical equipment, but that, that area has more, a more limited space. Looking on the other direction, the existing building, the two-story storefront, the rooftop addition, the chimney on the floor, on the top floor that is being proposed and sort of like a bird's eye view from the church presumably, looking down into the proposed building with the restored storefront and the rooftop addition. I'll pause here.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Ginsburg and then Commissioner Goldblum?
Some of the renderings show the clean brick as a red brick and some of them show it as what seems to be a brownstone. Can you tell me what you expect it to be?
It's brownstone on Lenox and the brownstone will be restored and it's brick on 123rd Street. But the existing brick has been painted red.
Right.
And then we plan to remove that red pane, repoint and restore the bricks.
Have you done, do you know what that brick underneath the red, oh, it is? Thank you.
But the paint is really bright red.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
What's the system for storefront that you're using for your new? Anders storefront, two-inch aluminum and size tube? What is?
Yes, these are storefronts, aluminum frame storefronts with wood interiors and insulated glazed units with burr-friendly glass and IUs.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, is there anybody in the room who would like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, let me turn it over to Stephen Thompson for remote testimony.
Those joining via Zoom who wish to speak, please use the raise hand function, after which we ask you to unmute yourself, state your name for the record and you'll have three minutes to speak. The first speaker will be Bethany Vickery.
Thank you. My name is Bethany Vickery. I'll be speaking on behalf of the Victorian Society of New York. The Victorian Society recommends the approval of the proposed alterations to the two-story storefront infill. The tax photographs show that the original cladding on the lower two floors was removed at least 85 years ago. The applicant is proposing to copy the storefront design installed at that time, duplicating the low bulkheads, corner entrance, wide display windows, continuous horizontals and on the second floor, alternating wide and narrow windows. This has our full support. However, we didn't see any material samples. The storefront should The storefront should have an enamel finish similar to the painted finishes available eighty-five years ago. We also feel they are missing a chance to establish a signature, a signage master plan and to make provisions for the installation of the awnings. They should work with staff on both these additions to the proposal. We recommend denial of the proposed rooftop addition. The addition will be too visible, both because of the width of Lenox Avenue and also because of the corner location of the building. It will also be the first rooftop addition on this row, diminishing the unity of this cohesive block of row houses. Finally, we have no concerns about the installation of a deck on the roof above the two-story extension on one hundred and twenty-third street, but we couldn't find notes about regarding the material for the proposed parapet railing. The railing shows most clearly in the rendering on drawing thirty-three. It looks like a glass railing. Our committing was divided on the possible use of glass railings here. Glass railings sound inconspicuous, but they're rarely cleaned. Dirty glass is not unobtrusive. We recommend that the other railings be considered. The historic metal railings on the fire escape could be copied for the parapet railing or perhaps the least visible dark-toned wire mesh in between rails. Thank you very much.
The next speaker will be Kaylee Johnson.
Hello, Commissioners, my name is Kaylee Johnson. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic District's Council. HGC finds this proposal to be largely appropriate. We would like to see the rooftop addition pushed back three feet from the rear facade, and we wonder if the applicant might consider bringing more brick into the base to balance out the glassiness. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else joining via Zoom who wishes to speak, please use the raise hand function. I'd seen on, I'll note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Ten recommends approval. And Mount Morris Park Civic, sorry, Mount Morris Park Community Improvement Association also recommends approval.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to respond to any of the comments?
There is a comment about adding more brick to minimize the extent of glazing on the second floor. We, not knowing what the original configuration and design and that of the building was in the eighteen nineties, we assume that it was obviously masonry. We don't know if the brickwork extended all the way down to the ground floor, or maybe there was a brownstone base, as is all common on other buildings down the block. We didn't want to speculate in terms of trying to go back to the original condition that we didn't really know what it was. We wanted to stop in the known condition from what we believe is circa nineteen oh eight subway construction. And we didn't want to create a hybrid of something that could be a blend between the original and the altered nineteen eighteen, nineteen oh eight condition. So I hear the comment, it's very glazy, is is typical to find a building with so much glass. But that's what it was, that's what it's been. There are all the buildings down the block. On one hundred and twenty-third street, where Settepanee, the restaurant is, that is also, has a lot of two, two-floor, two-story height storefronts. So it wasn't uncommon. But the archival information and and reflects that that's what it was, and we didn't want to create a blend. In terms of the setting back the rooftop addition at the rear facade, three feet away, we explored that. And if I may go to one of the images in the appendix, I believe that we have an image that kind of shows here. All right, I will have to find it. So this is the study where we evaluated that what would happen if we would move that, the, the rear facade away from the existing brick masonry facade, three feet away. And what we'd do is that it would expose the rooftop enclosure, mechanical enclosure even more, and would make it even more visible. So at, at the end, we felt that there would be no real benefit because it would simulate that that enclosure is actually taller than what it is because it would just hide it, it would hide it less and it exposed it more. So we explored that, but we felt that there was no real benefit in terms of minimizing the visibility of the addition by just pushing it back. If we just still make it visible, and it would actually make it even more pronounced because the rooftop enclosure would be more visible.
Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Ginsburg?
What is the floor-to-ceiling height of the addition?
It's, it's eight, eight oh, and the, the floor-to-roof height is only ten feet. So we already, the existing roof is slope. We are removing the existing slope, and then we're creating a new floor just as low as we can. And this is shown in one of the sections that I went through. So we are removing the existing roof structure and creating a new deck just right above the windows of the existing fourth floor unit. So we can't go any lower, and we're starting just as low as we can. And we're only limiting that addition to ten feet above the top of the corbel brick on the rear facade, not even the top of the part of, but the actual brick, corbel brick molding on the rear facade.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Jefferson?
What's, what's the height of the mechanical enclosure and the units, the total height?
The, the height, I believe, is about four feet. I, I don't have that from the top of my head right now, but I believe that it's four feet from the roof.
From the top of the parapet, it's four feet?
From the top of the part of, of the roof, part of, the visible roof, the edge of the, the extension.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go ahead and close the hearing. Commissioner Goldblum, would you make a motion to close the hearing? Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that?
Who second?
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you like to start this discussion?
So there are three parts to this. I think the storefront is basically fine. I think the details need to be worked out a little more, but that can be done with staff. I think the roof deck is fine. I'm all right with the glass railing, but I'll see what my fellow commissioners say because we may want to do something more like the fire escape rail. The rooftop addition, you've already done everything you can to lower it. But I do think it should be set back at least two feet from that rear wall so it's clear the differential between what's new and what's existing. And with those changes, I can find this appropriate.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilder?
Overall, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Ginsburg. I think I like being able to see the, the new storefront at the first and, and second floor. I think that's a, that should bring more life to this corner. It's, it's on this block, it's a unique kind of situation because it does turn the block. So I think that's quite appropriate. I'm okay with the, with the railing at the low roof. And also, I think in an effort to differentiate the rooftop addition, I think there should be some, some sort of setback. I'm not sure of the distance, though, but I think you can kind of work with, work on it and figure out the proper balance. Overall, I find it appropriate.
Thank you. Commissioner Kumbay?
Overall, I find it appropriate. I'm in consensus about the storefront and also the rooftop addition. I do believe it does need to be set back from the rear wall. But again, that could be worked out. And I really don't have a comment on the railing at the, the back. I believe it could be many different items.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
The storefront infill, I think it's fine, they can, appropriate. I find the roof penthouse a bit difficult because it's shoehorning two-piece. The program is too much for the roof, actually. It has to be set back at least three feet. I mean, it just has to. I wonder if there's something could be done about the mechanical enclosure. Can, can it be lowered? Because it's very visible.
Think on the new zoning, it's required to be fully screened. So the zoning, if anything, would require it to be raised. Yeah. So I don't think it's a good move, but that's what the zoning says.
So the only issue I have is if three feet back.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
I think this is going to be a great improvement to this corner. It's, it's an interesting storefront, it'll be a nice addition to this, and certainly a big improvement to the building. I generally agree with everyone we've been saying. I would add that in terms of the storefront, I think that the applicant should work with the staff to find a storefront cap or some kind of detailing to enhance the detail of that storefront. At this scale, at this size, if you're going to just use regular, standard colonial storefront, it's going to look like standard colonial storefront. So adding a panel or something, you know, there's lots of standard parts that you can use out of the box. I personally am okay with the, with the rooftop addition in AC, but it sounds like the trend is not, is to ask for a setback, so that's certainly okay.
Thank you. And Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I agree with Michael that this is a, will be an improvement long overdue for, sorry to see the, the state that it was in. My, my recommendation, I mean, I, I, I have no problem with some of the, the suggestion from the other commissioner, but my, my attention would be on that second floor. I, I think the, the staff should pay close attention to the detail and the color. I think the way they render, I hope it comes out on the rendering, that the darker color will help it blend in because originally it really popped out at, at, as a, because it's so, it wraps around the corner and it made it the most prominent feature. So I think under the new application, when it's a darker color, you will receive more fade, more into the background. So I hope the applicant can work with the staff to make sure that it blends in. So this was a comment about the lack of detailing on, on that area.
Okay, so are you comfortable? You know, the setback and articulation of the storefront? Thank you.
With regards to LPC dash twenty-six dash zero-three-zero-three-seven-two-sixty, Lenox Avenue, Mount Morris Park Historic District. A row house designed by Charles H. Beer and built in eighteen eighty-five, eighty-six. Application is to install storefront infill and construct a rooftop addition. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features which contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Mount Morris Park Historic District. I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant features, that the proposed two-story metal storefront featuring restored cornice entrances, low bulkhead and thin mullions with dark finish, and large areas of glazing punctuated by operable hopper windows closely replicates the rhythm and transparency of the historic storefront as seen in the historic tax photos. That the limited visibility of the proposed one-story rooftop addition and its mechanical equipment, if sufficiently designed and set back from the front and rear facade, could be appropriate and not overwhelm or call attention away from the historic building and others in the row. And that the standing seam dark finish metal cladding of the addition is in keeping with materials traditionally found on rooftop accretions in the historic district. However, I find that the proposed rooftop addition and mechanical and structural screen wall, when viewed from the south and west over the primary street facade, is excessive and will track from the building and the row. Whoops. Yeah, I, sorry. Delete that, but the rooftop addition is aligned with the rear facade with no setback, thereby obscuring the building's historic massing. And the details of the new store, two-story storefront remain unclear and unresolved. Therefore, I recommend that the massing, that the, to, 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 that the rooftop addition be set back a few feet from the rear facade and that the details of the storefront framing be clarified and refined with staff.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Wilder, would you second that motion?
Second.
Thank you. And Mark, will you call the vote?
Chairmaster, vice chairmaster?
Aye.
Mr. Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Kumbay?
Aye.
Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilder?
Aye.
Seven in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
Okay, that's approved with modifications. Please continue to work with staff. Okay, Corey?
All right, we do have one more item on the agenda that we're going to read into the record. It was listed as item fourteen. That's LPC twenty-six dash one-two-two-seven-three, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, block five forty-four, lot seventy-six, seven East Seventh Street, the foundation building Cooper Union for the Advancement of Science and Art, individual landmark, an Anglo-Italianate-style institutional building designed by Frederick A. Peterson and built in eighteen fifty-three to fifty-nine. Application is to install security cameras. Again, we are reading that into the record today, not to be presented, it will appear on a future public hearing date. But since we do have it on the agenda and we are reading it into the record, we will ask that if anyone is in the room to testify on this item, we could take that now. Seeing that there is no one, I'll ask Elizabeth or Stephen to see if we have anyone on Zoom that wishes to testify on this item. Anyone joining via Zoom who wishes to testify on this item, please raise your hand. Seeing none. Okay, seeing that there is none, again, reading this into the record today to be put onto a subsequent public meeting agenda.
Okay, so that concludes our public hearing and public meeting for November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Thank you all for your participation, and we will see everybody next Tuesday, November twenty-fifth, for our next public hearing.